Welcome everyone to our Alice City Council me- special meeting. Today is Tuesday, it is ten, ten oh five. We will open our meeting June twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Well, we will begin with our invocation by Councilmember Mrs. Sandra Bowen, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Mr. Pete Crisp. If we can all stand.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to thank you for the blessings that you are giving us today and the blessings that we will receive tomorrow and thereon. We ask that you continue to watch over us, keep us safe, and keep us healthy. Lord, we ask that you be with this council today and every day as we make decisions for our city, and may all our decisions bring glory and honor to your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we don't have any citizen comments. Move on to councilmembers, starting with Mr. Crisp. Any public announcements?
None at this time, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. And I don't have any. We will move on to agenda. Item number three. Discuss, consider, and act upon an ordinance vacating a portion of an unimproved right-of-way. Zero point three seven six acre of Matilda Street, zero point one one six acre alley, zero point two nine six acre tract, and zero point two two six acre tract out of block one, block two, being part of the Jose Maria Garcia survey abstract number one sixty six. City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, providing a savings and severability clause, providing a repealer clause revoking all ordinances in conflict therewithen- or therewith, I'm sorry, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city attorney's been working on this with Patrick also, so he'll be presenting this agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Lemon.
Yes, Mayor, this is, this is just to revisit something that we did last Tuesday. After we had discussions with the Dollar General representative, they wanted to go ahead and vacate the street. And so, acknowledging the fact that they couldn't do it through abandonment, and so what we did is we went ahead and we prepared an ordinance coming to you guys to vacate Matilda Street or a portion of Matilda Street. You'll see attached to the ordinance is the meets and bounds description that shows the portion that it is. There's also a diagram that we'll be attaching to it that their surveyor drew out for us. But basically, it goes from Cameron Street oh to, I believe, the beginning of the Perez addition there. It's approximately, I don't know, maybe it's five hundred feet? I don't know, but it's, it's a, it's described in the meets and bounds. And then additionally, we are vacating the alleys along with the ordinance. And pretty much that's all that this does.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
I have none, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No questions, ma'am.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
If there's no other, no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion creating ordinance vacating a portion of the unimproved right-of-way point three seven six acre Matilda Street, point one one six acre alley, point two nine six acre tract, and point two two six acre tract out of block one, block two, being a part of the Jose Maria Garcia survey abstract number one sixty six. City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, providing a savings and severability clause, providing a repealer clause revoking all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we move on to agenda item number four. Discuss, consider, and act upon final plat Jesus Medine subdivision establishing lot one and block one containing two point five one one acres, part of the Jose Maria Garcia survey abstract number one sixty six, Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor, this is as it relates to agenda item number three. The plat showing the, the vacating the portion of the street and the alleys. And once again, our city attorney worked on this as well with the surveyor and Patrick also. So, do you want to give an update on it, Patrick?
This is just with the changes that you just finished making. Well, it's loud. I tease on their game today. It's just with, with the changes that were just finished happening with the vacating of the property. It's making those changes on, on the plat.
Okay. Counsel? Any questions on the final plat? No?
No questions.
Mr. Burke?
No questions.
Mrs. Bowen?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Then at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept, well, I'm sorry, the agenda item number four.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat of the Jesus Medine subdivision establishing lot one and block one containing two thousand five hundred and eleven acres, part of the Jose Maria Garcia survey abstract number one eighty six, one sixty six, Jimwells County, Texas.
With, with a correction on, it's a two point five one one acres.
Oh, I'm sorry, two point five one.
I was like, I didn't bring my glasses.
So Pete, you did the second?
Yeah. Two point five.
Two point five one one.
Okay, with that correction, may I have?
Second.
All in favor, sorry, sorry.
Second emotion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, sorry about that.
No problem.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Yeah, John.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, John, thank you.
Thank you, John Lemon.
Okay, agenda item number five. Hear, presentation, and discuss, consider, and act upon applying for NTIA, National Telecommunication and Information Administration, fiber high-speed internet broadband infrastructure program grant within the city of Alice in conjunction with VTX one and one, authorizing city manager to apply and sign all documents and to allocate matching funds.
Mayor? Yeah, and so our EDC Director Larry Martinez brought this grant opportunity forward. And so, I know he has a representative from VTX here to make a presentation. So, Larry, let me introduce you.
Good morning, council. It's a nice morning today, with some rain. This meeting all started with a conversation with VTX. I know probably about six, seven years ago, Michael and I entertained some issues when we were in the council in accordance with VTX. And some of the monies are available. As we all know, you know, things are coming down the pipe from the federal and the state level about broadband expansion. And they're busy with me, and they asked if they could, had a lot of questions that were beyond my pay grade. And I said, that's the way to do it, just go to the city council and let them visit with you guys, and y'all come up with a plan. So, without me talking any longer, Denise Parientes from VTX is here with us, and they brought some other staff as well, so they'd like to make a presentation.
Okay.
For your time today.
Thank you. Mrs. Parientes?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, my name is Denise Parientes, as mentioned, and I am the External Relations Manager for the company. VTX One Companies is proudly headquartered in Raymondville, Texas. We've been serving our community for sixty-nine years. So for those of you who don't know of us, we are a wireless and fiber broadband company. We also, of course, we are telecommunications-based, right? So we also do telephone, hosted phones, symmetrical and asymmetrical internet for entities from the Rio Grande Valley all the way up to Seguin and San Antonio. So we cover a service area of approximately forty-one thousand square miles, and we're approximately the size of Ohio in our coverage. So just to sort of give you an idea of who we are and what we do. We are here because we wanted to speak to you all about the NTIA broadband infrastructure grant opportunity. This, just as he mentioned, the federal governments are bringing a lot of funds and availability to other, all throughout the United States and to those that are interested. We want to approach the city of Alice because one thing that this particular grant would allow you to do is bring fiber to your community. We are currently a wireless provider in your area, and we would like to expand fiber if we could. And this grant would give us a lot of opportunity to do so. Any households or businesses that have fiber would be able to have this particular internet. And of course, as you well know, fiber versus wireless is much more dependable and reliable for your community. And certainly, this grant, if you were to be in partnership with us, could allow us to expand that and start that partnership, okay? So what is the NTIA broadband infrastructure grant? It basically is available through, of course, NTIA for the deployment of fixed broadband service in eligible service areas. That fixed broadband, of course, would be the fiber that I spoke of. Two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars are available, and the funding range for each project to those that are awarded, any type of grant would be from five million to thirty million dollars. Of course, we wouldn't know exactly that amount that we would ask for yet because we do have some research to do prior to that, but that would be the funding range. You can actually ask for more monies than the thirty million. You just have to be specific to find out, or excuse me, specific to the grant committee and expand all the information that you would need more monies than the thirty million. Eligible participants are a covered partnership, which would be yourself, the city of Alice, and a provider of fixed broadband service, which would be ourselves, the VTX One Companies. Our timeline would be an application deadline of August seventeenth. That application deadline has already started. We're within the ninety days that they've given us. And so, we do have, I guess, time against our side, right? We've got August seventeenth and about a month and a half left or so to apply. Awardees are expected to be announced by November fifteenth and funds available by November twenty ninth. In terms of details about the grant, the expectation of funds need to be used within one year of receipt of the award. Extensions can be made or asked for depending on extenuating circumstances. Of course, we would hope to be on time for making sure to use those funds within that year of receipt. If the grant opportunity is applied for, the city of Alice would actually have to serve as the lead applicant for the grant. And we, of course, would be in partnership with yourselves. Any service areas that are available would be any households within a census block or a business that, that are not yet available to internet, right? An area is considered unserved if that household or business lacks a twenty-five by three connection. So it could be that a provider of internet could, could be currently in their area but cannot provide a twenty-five by three downloader, upload and download speed, right? So if that is the case, then that's considered unserved, if they cannot deliver that speed to, to the customer that they serve. And as long as no broadband provider has been selected to receive funds in the area, then that area is also considered unserved. Eligible use of funds is noted on here. And basically, it's as you would expect, construction-related. It needs to be competitively and technologically neutral, have a deployment speed minimally of twenty-five by three, latency to support a real-time application, and every household in the eligible service area that the grant would be particular to would be served. Funding is meant for construction, improvement and acquisition of facilities, long-term leases of more than one year, and also the application expenses, if there are any, that are incurred. And in terms of limitation of funds, of course, it cannot be used for the following, which would be communications, support, and service, profit or fees, offset of funds, or repayment of loans. The grant does give priority to the following, and they are in order by the greatest importance. Greatest number of households in an eligible area, a wholly owned, a wholly, wholly area, excuse me, an area that is in a county that has a population of more than fifty thousand inhabitants, or also is in an adjacent area of a town of more than fifty thousand inhabitants. And actually, my apologies, I sort of didn't explain that correctly. It gives favor to those that are in areas that are under fifty thousand. Projects that are most cost-effective, prioritizing such projects in areas that are most rural. That sort of lends itself to what I just mentioned. And then also projects designed to be one hundred by twenty meg. So if they can deliver a faster speed, that is also favorable in this particular case. And they will give priority to that. Matching funds. In terms of the cost of the project, if we are to give ten percent of the cost of the project, matching funds can be made, and the NTIA looks favorably on those that would give funds. But please do know that for the grant opportunity, funds do not have to be given or matched for it to be applied for. Any next steps? And of course, this is why we've come to you, right? Is to be able to see if we can partner and find out, can we do this together? Any next steps that we would include would be identifying potential census blocks that would qualify. We would need your help, the city of Alice, in identifying those. We have access to mapping and such, but the city of Alice, of course, you'll have more information on your infrastructure and what is currently in place. Define a working agreement. That would be, of course, decided on by both of us. Agreement of ownership of assets, also agreed on by the both of us. The approximate cost of the project, we could assist you with that, of course, with the construction and knowing the costs that would go into the service areas that are detailed for the grant. And of course, jointly agree whether to pursue it or not. That's sort of a brief overview of the opportunity. If you have any further questions, certainly I can help to entertain that. I also have two of my fellow coworkers who are part of our sales and construction team and our managers for those departments. And we'll happily take those now if you need any. Thank you.
Counsel? Okay, Mrs. Bowen? Any questions?
No, not right at this moment.
Mr. Burke?
Yes. Will you be making a similar presentation to the county and/or the school district? Has that been in any planning or discussion? The reason I'm asking is my, by looking at this, it seems like most of this project would be within city of Alice. But there is an equal and/or greater need, if we're talking about students and school district, outside of our city because of our school district's borders being an extended area. It's just a thought, I'm just.
Right. At this time, we are presenting this particular grant opportunity only to the city. Our company may be eligible to talk about that at a later time. Of course, as I mentioned, our construction engineer, sorry, excuse me, construction manager Orlando Quintanilla is here. Any project like that would be considered through his, his department. I'll let him speak on that.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, counsel. My name is Orlando Quintanilla, I'm the outside plant design manager for VTX One. We oversee the engineering and the construction portion of our business. Now, when it comes to, to look in other areas that are considered underserved, yes, we can look at other counties. We are working with other counties as we speak, Escosa County, Willistee County, to determine those areas that are considered underserved and do need that additional bandwidth. And we're looking at various options. We're looking at wireless capability in the event that it's a rural, very rural community. Sometimes fiber can get a little expensive based on your households. Now, we also look at the fiber delivery as well, depending on, you know, maybe city buildings, county buildings, school buildings, stuff like that. We expand into those areas as well, we determine the cost for that. So Jimwells County can also be on the radar as well to determine whether or not we can expand to the area as well.
Without, without, I hate naming a company, but what, basically, what is the difference, just an educationary, between what you're offering and, say, Spectrum? What, can you give me a little?
Sure. So, so Spectrum is, is, I guess, your cable TV provider initially, right? And then they also provide broadband, and they also provide phone. Now, the difference between them and us, we're more of a telephone company. It's where our roots began. Our found, our company was founded in nineteen fifty-two. And we provided telephone at the time to rural communities that were outside of the territory that was served by Southwestern Bell and GT at the time. So we are more on long lines of AT&T and those companies, we're more a telephone company. But one thing that we also like to say is we're local. You know, we also do fiber from one of our offices into the side of the building. Spectrum, on the other hand, will do fiber to a node, what they call it. Essentially, it's a box on the, on the overhead power line, and then they do coaxial cable into the home. So in some cases, they're limited in terms of bandwidth. They can only provide maybe up to three hundred or four hundred meg's of internet. And in our case, we can provide higher bandwidth speeds via the fiber connection up to a gig. And in some cases, transport-type services can be to ten gigs. So, you know, we feel like our capacity is good. Obviously, we're a smaller company than Spectrum, but we think that that's to our advantage because we're local, and we can help the local community in these, in these situations. So that's pretty much in a nutshell, I think. I think we'd like to separate ourselves from that business model. We try to work more directly with, with our customers and our members.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Molina?
I just had a few questions. I know that your presentation here is mainly focused around the construction, but like, what happens after the construction? Like, what is VTX one's role afterwards?
Right, we can, I'll have Orlando talk about that.
Yep, so, so the maintenance of it. So it just depends on the agreement. Obviously, as us a provider, we are a large provider that can support that, that infrastructure. So the infrastructure itself, as we maintain our existing infrastructure, you know, if there's issues with the cable, we fix it. We do our own, all our own installations. We do our own splicing, so we're a turnkey provider. So we will implement it, build it, and maintain it.
And as part of the construction, it's my understanding, like, y'all have everything set up outside of, like, the residence premises or business premises for people to tie on?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so any other fiber, I guess, any, any other provider can come in and tie into it? Or no, just, it's exclusive to you?
That's correct.
Okay. And do you have an approximate price, what it would normally run for a city this size? That y'all have done before, or?
Well, well, at this point in time, Alice is roughly twice the size of the, our other new community of Raymondville. That, that's our headquarters. So essentially, we do have some pricing, but that was a few years ago. What we look at it from, from the perspective is cost per mile or even, even, even cost per foot. So in some cases, we can look at anywhere between thirteen dollars to fifteen dollars a foot. Now, that's to be able to do directional drilling. So the directional drilling itself is less intrusive, and we don't have an open trench. So it costs a little more, but at that point in time, it protects the existing utilities, the water sewer, any other utilities in the area, to where we cut down on a potential of road cuts as well because we're underneath roads. So the other option you look at is per mile, that's more on the rural community. We can be working thirty to fifty thousand dollars per mile. So that's kind of where you look at it. So if you look at your overall perspective, it doesn't mean that we're going to build down both sides of the road, and each road, it'd just be like one pass and to be able to go across the street to those individual homes. So that's kind of where we're at. I couldn't give you an overall number yet because we haven't looked at Alice into depth at this point because it's kind of just the beginning phases of this. But we can always look at that as well and give you a high-level cost at that point.
Have y'all, I mean, what other cities have y'all gone and kind of?
Sure.
Applied for this grant, or is this, did this grant just come up?
This is new, but we have done these types of grants in the past.
You said you haven't?
We have.
Oh, you have?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so we actually worked with USDA and RUS, which is Rural Utility Service. It's a company, it's a portion of USDA, for us to be able to do something very similar to this. So we went into, actually, it was eleven, what we call eleven exchanges, eleven areas, but it was twelve cities. Now, some of them are unincorporated, but they're communities. So you think about the valley, we actually did Lightford, Raymondville. We did that, Santa Rosa, it's a small community outside of Harlingen. Now, up here, we actually did Orange Grove, Agudulce, Three Rivers, George West, Jertonton, Charlotte. Okay, so we did all those communities, and we actually overbuilt fiber to the home within those areas. So all those residents within the community actually have state-of-the-art connections, fiber connections from our facilities over to their home. So we have done that in the past. We also have seventeen exchanges that are part of our Valley Telephone Cooperative Company. And essentially, what that is, is the founding seventeen areas that we started with. So, you know, communities like Tilden, kind of this area, Anna Rose, it's a little community just, just north of here. You know, we also have Port Mansfield down south. We have a little area called a south, just north of Grand City. So, you know, that, that's, that's our overall footprint in terms of fiber. So we have fiber in all these areas, all the twelve areas that I mentioned now or before, those are all hundred percent fiber to the home within the city limits. Outside the city limits, we did fixed wireless, which is able to get twenty-five-three band. So, so and, and, and I guess to compare it to that, we applied for monies, grant money, and that was all on, on us. We actually paid the, we actually applied for loans as well. Those loans were also paid off to, to the government. So we did that just to be able to serve those communities because they were.
So you all took out the loans to provide fiber optics to those communities?
At that point, I guess.
Wow, okay.
We did it ourselves.
So y'all set up all the, ah, this is loud. So y'all set up all the, all the infrastructure, like, to make it available for residents and businesses, I guess, as well?
Right.
And then, and then y'all come back with a package for these folks and say, you know, for so much a month, we can offer you certain levels of, of speed or whatever. How does that compare to like the locals around here, like Spectrum and some of these others?
Very competitive, yes, very competitive. In some cases, our prices are lower. In some cases. Now, there may be a situation where it's in line with their pricing, but we like to be competitive, and we want to provide those options to the people. That way, you know, Spectrum doesn't have a foothold in the area. We want to be competitive with them and say there's other options out there.
Okay. And the last, the last comment I wanted to make, and it's really a question, but I know y'all have said you've been around, how many years?
Sixty-nine. Sixty-nine, nineteen fifty-two was our, our first day we started.
Like, I've never heard of you, and I'm sorry, I'm born, been around here, whatever. I'm happy for you guys. And my question is, how are y'all going to service us, service us locally? If, you know, are y'all gonna, you know, I mean, how, because, because you're, you're based out of Raymondville, right?
Right.
So, you know, it's small, so I'm just saying.
We actually have, we actually have several home offices. We actually have a home office, well, not home office, but I guess, a business storefront in George West. We actually have a storefront in Falforias. Yeah, so we actually overs, we actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mention Falforias, Primont, those are closest communities. Serve those areas fiber to a hundred percent. So we have technicians that roam around the area as well. Now, our overall, it just depends on what we do in terms of business, but we could essentially set an office here in Alice as well.
Yeah, because we're a lot bigger, right? So we're a lot bigger, so we would, we would expect that, right?
We would have a good representation here, yes.
Okay.
That's definitely an option.
Mr. Quintanilla, I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, Mr. Molina, thank you, thank you, counsel.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes. Thank you all, counsel, for the questions. I have some of my own, some ones that you already asked. You know, you said that your, your ended up cost ended up being competitive. When everything's said and done, the grant process pretty much pays for the infrastructure, if I'm not mistaken. So how can you just be competitive when somebody else is paying for, for the initiation of your product? When other companies paid for their infrastructure? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be more along the lines of y'all to actually be way more competitive as opposed to be online, if not, the statement was, sometimes we're cheaper? I, I'm trying to get my head around that. If somebody, if it's being paid for to get there, how, how you become actually just on that level?
Well, I think that in regards to competitiveness, right? It all depends on your market. We do, as Orlando mentioned, we go up to nine hundred and forty meg on our fiber product, right? So, you know, we don't have a cost comparison per se, but as he mentioned, we do try to keep as competitive a price as possible, or else we won't stay in business. So, you know, we will, we do our best as, as best we can in each community. And so, you know, that's what we deliver.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right, so, so when I made the comment competitive, we try to be competitive, and she's right about the business model in terms of how we, because we also have to maintain the plan, right? So the plan is in the ground, and obviously, the majority of the money is already in the ground. At that point in time, it's already paid for, like you mentioned, as a grant. But, but as, there's also a cost of being able to run the, the actual company itself, be able to have a local presence, stuff like that. So it's very, at that point, you know, we'd just like to say, yes, we are competitive, and we're going to be there. We may be less, right, in some cases, just depends on, on what's going on within the community.
And then, and then the question that, that Councilmember Molina had asked is, the grant process is, is initiated by the city, and the city really owns the whole grant, but basically, we're handing it over to y'all? Is that how this works?
No.
I mean, I know that we have ownership, but he had said that other, other companies can, can couple into it or what have you, and y'all had said no. So basically, y'all, y'all become exclusive for this, what we are applying for this grant, for this fiber. We're basically putting you on the fiber business in Alice.
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't think that it may fully cover the entire area. I mean, we don't know that until we do our research, right? Like, that's still yet to be determined, the service areas that are eligible. But in regards to the grant and the opportunity, you know, us coming to you is really, we, we do a presence. us coming to you is really, we, we do a presence in Alice, just first off, right? We have wireless service, we do not yet have fiber. So it's important to note that we are in your community, not to the extent of which we are at fiber-based, right? Um, we want to try to get that here, and I think by getting involved with the grant, I don't think it's, um, whole, you know, I don't think that, that's serving us entirely, that's going back to your community. I think that's the most important thing to remember here. Um, yes, the connection is direct to us, nobody else can use that, but there, it is still a competitive marketplace, right? There's still others that have an onus in your area as well. Um, this, I believe, could be the start of a partnership, um, because it could start off, um, fiber build within the area if it doesn't cover the entire, um, city. And then, as spoken to by Mr. Burke, um, you know, maybe we could entertain something else, as Orlando mentioned, with further build, um, et cetera, which may not be covered by grant monies, right? So I think that that's just important to note, this is just one piece of the puzzle, um, and just a start of trying to do something further for your community to have more deliverable and reliable service on the fiber side. Oh, yeah, um, Jeff, our sales manager, would like to.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
One of the things I'd like to add, uh, to this is, this is actually not gonna be for us to be able to get a foothold into your community. V T X one is already committed to over a million dollars that we've already put aside, that we will be building fiber, uh, from one seventy past the IHOP. That project will be starting within the next two to three months. Uh, for us to, to be able to complete that, it'll take about six months, and we're gonna try to provide you guys, uh, more competition within the area. I used to work for Bright Star, uh, and the McIntyre's, and I'm fully aware of the problems they had with AT&T, with Spectrum, and the lack of competition and the lack of service, right? That you guys were a small community and didn't get the recognition you deserve from the larger companies. This is an opportunity to have a, a company come in and really say, this is our area of focus, right? The small cities, you know, they're, they're wonderful in Houston, they're wonderful in San Antonio. Uh, in all honesty, this is a footnote for them, where you're our bread and butter. This is where we live, this is the areas that we serve, and this is an opportunity to provide, uh, a world-class service to your residents that you currently don't have today, right? So we've already made the commitment to, to spend over a million dollars in your community. This opportunity just came up a, a couple of weeks ago, and we said Alice would be a great place where, you know, there's constituents that you guys have that are underserved today, that this could be a project, we could say, hey, let's partner together, let's, let's build some more fiber out so they're not dependent upon one, maybe even two companies to, to get service. And that's really what we're, we're trying to do, uh, is provide more, more options for people within the community. And if we can build out to, to help the schools, uh, people in rural community, that's definitely what we're about.
Now, now, with your million-dollar investment, apparently y'all have run some kind of a survey or, or, or market study that, that says you have an idea of who's basically underserved, who are y'all gonna be heading towards anyway, before this came up. I mean, is there a rough count? Is there a rough percentage? Is there something out there that says what this grant will actually address in, within the city limits? Because I know that it's gonna, it's gonna help outside of city limits a lot more than I really feel it's gonna help within the city limits. That's my big concern.
I think that's why we're here today, right, is to get an understanding of what areas within the community or outside of the community aren't being served, because we don't have all those answers, right? So the, the fiber we're gonna build is gonna go right up against AT&T and up against Spectrum, and we're in direct competition with them, right? Uh, it'd be nice to only build where they're not, but that doesn't leave us very many places to build, right? So we, we stand by our product. So, uh, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned is we're the only company that all, over eight thousand miles of fiber we have, a hundred percent of it is buried. We don't have a foot above ground. So when you live by the coast a, and you have natural disasters, that means something, right? Our telephone poles will blow over and, because we're not on them. Uh, we're in the ground, so it's, it's gonna bring a much more reliable, faster speed, uh, that is currently available to this community. And, and so we'd like to take that to the businesses, to the city, to the ISD, and say, hey, there's another option today, another partner to work with. Whether these, the, the community chooses to work with us is a gamble on our part. Uh, we're hoping that the community will say, hey, we want to use this different service. We like the pricing, we like the speed, we like the reliability, and we want to work with people that are from here and not have representatives that are living elsewhere, right? Uh, and, and so that's where we tend to be strong. And, and that's, you know, Philly and George West and Three Rivers, that, that's where, that's where we live. That's, that's where we like to do business, and we'd love to include Alice in that.
All right, going to, um, the question here, it says, talking, talking about populations, that it, it had stated more than fifty thousand, uh, but you had said something about under fifty thousand, we're well under.
Yes.
And we're not necessarily neighboring, um, I mean, Corpus considered a neighbor, but it is forty-something miles, so it's not a neighbor.
Yes.
Um, so how does that actually work for us when your statement here says more, or was it supposed to be under fifty thousand?
Well, it, it, it basically gives priority, one of the first priorities is the fact that it, it gives priority to the most households within a serving area, but it gives secondary priority to those that are under fifty thousand, and then third to that, uh, rural areas.
Okay, and then, I guess my biggest concern, and this is one of the things that, that, that gets me, is a five-million-dollar project, we don't have five hundred thousand dollars to throw at this. So, I mean, that's, that's the thing, is, is we would, we, we love the idea of getting things to our constituents, but we don't have money to be throwing around right now. We have to be perfectly honest about that.
It's not a requirement that, that anybody puts any money down to be, uh, eligible for the grant. It's helpful, right, it's one of the things they're gonna take into consideration. And if we found the, the right area to partner with you, uh, I don't think it's up without the bound, outside of our capabilities to come up with some of that money ourselves. Uh, so I wouldn't put that as a deterrent, uh, to apply, right? They're, they're looking for places that are underserved, that aren't getting the proper internet speed. I think COVID really illustrated how many people in our community were going without. And, and that's opened our eyes even as a company, you know, we were stunned at how many kids were, were struggling. And so we went out of our way to provide free internet service, discounted internet service to college kids, to teachers, doctors, nurses, and all the students that were struggling at home. Uh, and this is a, an opportunity for us to help more people, and, and so we're gonna do everything we can to do that.
See, I know the school had to go out with hotspots and stuff for a bunch of students.
We, we saw that, right? And it just, if you have more than one kid at home, uh, unless they had their own hotspot, it just wasn't gonna work. Uh, they ran into a lot of limitations, there's different ways the school districts went at the problem. And when you have kids, you know, located, you know, five miles from each other in rural community, that kind of seemed like that was maybe the only option at the time. Some of the different things we could do with this grant and other things we're planning on doing outside of the grant in the future will help address some of those issues within your community and outside of the community in this area.
Thank you.
I, I had a couple of questions, real, real quickly before. Um, and so AT&T and Spectrum, they already have fiber optics in place here?
Yes.
Correct?
Uh, AT&T, I believe, is DSL mostly, uh, in this area. Spectrum has, uh, fiber, uh, but like you said, it's to the node, right? So from there, it turns into coaxial cable to the home, and the farther you live away from that node, uh, the less of a signaling you get. It's also shared, right? So when everyone gets home from school, comes on Netflix and starts doing different things, uh, because it's a shared bandwidth, you tend to have slower speeds, you have slowdown periods that we don't typically see, or, or we don't have a problem with, with our fiber product. Uh, so they do fiber, uh, for the main infrastructure, but what's going into your home is just a coaxial cable. Uh, and, and so, you know, I know they advertise up to a gig, but if you've ever called to ask for the gig, you probably won't be able to get it from them.
Yeah, and we've been dealing with that from a city standpoint, trying to get, uh, cameras in places in certain areas. And, and, you know, we think that internet is everywhere, uh, in town, or the fiber's in a lot of places, but we, I mean, Spectrum is running to some places that we have, uh, but it's not built out, uh, over.
Yeah, so that's, we do fiber all the way to the premise, so you, you have a true fiber connection all the way into your home, all the way into a business, uh, whatever the infrastructure is, and so you don't have those problems.
And so how, how does your, your, um, I guess, your internet speed compared to like AT&T and Spectrum?
Uh, so very competitive, right, uh, except for the, the top end. Uh, we can get to a gig very easily, uh, there's no degradation of service or limitations on us being able to provide that. The other key factor is our upload speed is significantly higher over fiber. So, you know, uh, I live in an area, unfortunately, where I have to use Spectrum, I have a four hundred meg package and it's twenty meg upload. Well, when I have three kids at home that are trying to use Zoom, and my wife went back to school, didn't work out so well, because, uh, nowadays, we're sending out as much information as we're receiving, and without those upload speeds, you really start to struggle at home. With our fiber, our, our hundred meg connection has a fifty meg upload, right? So, uh, over double of what they're providing, providing. Uh, with our gig, you can get, you know, you can do a gig by gig, it's not a problem for, for our services. It's a significantly better product.
And as far as our obligation, there's no obligation on our part?
No, so this is a partnership that, that, uh, we've not only taken to Alice, but a couple of other communities that we felt that we could help. Uh, you know, and the, the grant calls for us to be a partner with a, a city or a county to, in order to be eligible. And we, so we identified Alice as, as one of the communities that probably, you know, based off of my experience having worked here, uh, having spent a lot of time here, that felt that we could help. And, and so that's the reason we selected Alice to try to partner with. We're very limited on the amount of time that we have to be able to, to form a partnership, and so, uh, Alice and Brownsville were the, two of the top contenders for us to be able to do that.
Okay, what was your name, sir?
Jeff Patterson.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, the grant amount depends on, because we're, we're not sure exactly how much right now.
Correct.
It depends on your research of the, um, the need and the area covered, right, or served.
And the construction.
And the construction costs, those, those are the main things that intertwine with the grant amount. Now, um, in that case, we, we're not really sure what the in-kind amount would be.
Right, so if you guys were to help us and say, hey, there, there's these neighborhoods in our community that we'd love to get fiber to. Uh, this is where we get our most complaints, the, you know, Spectrum's there, AT&T's there, but for whatever reason, they're just not getting the bandwidth. They seem to be struggling all the time. We could, I, then, once we know where those neighbors, uh, neighborhoods are, we can determine how much it would cost for the, the construction piece. And then that's what we're gonna turn in for, for the grant, right, is, is to say, hey, these are as many households that we can cover. This is the, the size of the area, this is how many people will be, will benefit from us coming into the area, and this is what the cost is to get there.
And, and they must meet the definition of eligible and unserved.
Right.
Eligible and unserved, okay.
And I think that's, uh, the, the part that most cities are struggling with, right? Because they have coverage, uh, according to the FCC, uh, Brownsville's a prime example. If you look on one list, they're on the least connected cities in America, towards the top, every year, year in, year out. If you go to the FCC website, it says they're ninety-nine point five percent served, how can both be true, right? So I think every community knows that, yes, technically, they may have, uh, an internet provider there, but they also know that they're not living up to, to the speeds and the reliability that they've been promised in the community, and that's where we can step in to help out.
Now, you say, um, here that it looks favorable upon the grant if we agree to a, an in-kind, a match. But have you been awarded before without the in-kind, without the match?
Well, this, this is a, a.
This is the first.
A new grant that, this is something that's, that's different. Like I said, like Orlando mentioned before, we've won grants before, uh, we built out a large portion of our network through those grants and loans that we've received. And so it, it's, we got to take each one on an, as an individual case basis.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have one last question. I have one, one final question.
Yeah.
You know what, maybe I'll, maybe I'll wait. No, go ahead.
Um, and, and this grant's open, AT&T and, uh, Spectrum could be applying for this grant as well.
For sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Have they, have they filled through the need also? Okay, um, also, the, uh, owned, who, who's gonna own the fiber? Uh, is that something we determine together?
Yeah, between us, and, and I can tell you, speaking to the CEO and some of the other projects we're working on, he's not opposed to Alice owning the fiber. Uh, that's, you know, that's something to, that we can discuss if you guys decide, like, hey, let's go look to see if there's an area we can find. Let's apply for it, and, and as we get into that point, we can decide, uh, we don't consider that an, an obstacle for us to move forward with you. We're not gonna be making demands like, you know, uh, we want you to help partner with us, but we wanna make all the rules. Uh, I think partnerships should be a joint effort where both are benefiting from it, and, and this is the opportunity to do that. And so, uh, I wouldn't consider that an obstacle on our part.
When do you guys determine whether, um, you would do, uh, matching funds for the bonus points?
Uh, I think once we determine how big of the, the area is, and, you know, and what the match is and what the likelihood of winning it, uh, we've got the funds to, to be able to do that. Uh, obviously, in, in all honesty, it's a decision above my pay grade. Uh, but I, I, I've been told that, that we have funds if it makes sense, uh, for us to move forward on a project.
Having an office here in Alice, I mean, I know y'all, the, the place on Agudulce, is that just, uh, is that an office or is just a transmission location, uh, maintenance location?
Yeah, there, there is not an office.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a point of presence for us, right, so, yeah, we, we do have fiber. Yeah.
So, so the, the offices, so we have our George West and Alforias, so the two closest.
Okay, and that's for equipment and things like that, people can go in?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Customer service, uh, sales locations.
Yes.
Uh, additionally, we have offices, we'll call offices, uh, in the other areas that we serve, that's for electronics and equipment and stuff like that.
Our technicians are also based out of those offices and typically, uh, may report in and then go outwardly for their day, so, uh, that's sort of how it goes.
And, um, would y'all commit to opening an office, uh, since we would be one of the larger locations?
I, I think that's something we would take into consideration, that's not something I could, I could make a determination or answer today. Uh, but I think that's always been our plan, right? We've already committed over a million dollars, and, and if we get the takeout that we expect, then obviously, we would like to open up an office here.
Spectrum offices in Corpus Christi, uh, there's still a location here, but that is not to go in for the public, that's maintenance, uh, and things like that, so they have one office.
Yes, Mr. L.
Answer that question, if we put it in the contract, if we bring it for the grant, they're gonna have an office in that space.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I had, I had just a couple, a couple of other questions. I apologize, it was all new to me, and, and I appreciate y'all coming here, and, uh, I don't mean to be difficult, but we just kind of, I mean, we don't know, we don't know, I apologize.
Ask a question, then not enough is probably the right way to go. I want people to feel comfortable in, in making decisions, right? It's hard to make a decision when we don't have all the information, uh, it's even hard to do it in the short ti- of a timeframe. Uh, but so I ask a question, we're happy to answer them.
The, the million dollars that you say you have committed, how, how is that committed?
Uh, so every year, we identify new projects that, that, uh, we wanna work on, and, and so, uh, Pleasanton was an area. So we have fiber to the home in Jertington, as you know, Jertington and Pleasanton are basically connected, uh, and we don't have much of, we have a wireless presence in Pleasanton. So Pleasanton was an area where, where we, we identified that we were gonna make the same type of investment and, and put it into our budget. The next year, we're going to build fiber into this community. Uh, Alice was the other community that we decided that we wanted to do that in. So, uh, working with Orlando, we identified these projects, and, you know, I think his budget alone is probably close to thirty million dollars of building out, uh, projects and for maintenance and, and routine projects that, that will come up. And so we made that determination, uh, last year, that we were going to build fiber at least through the center of the city, and if it goes well, we'll continue to expand, right?
So the million dollars, it just, just like, it has nothing to do with a grant? That's just you saying, hey, we're gonna invest here?
It's a completely different thing, yes.
It's on your own, kind of like AT&T and everybody else, right, without a grant or whatever.
Right, uh, our hope was if we build it, they will come, uh, and any support we can get in that area, uh, within the local community will be greatly appreciated. Uh, you know, it's, it is a gamble on our part, but, uh, we feel like we've, we've got a foothold in a lot of the other small communities, and I think we can do the same here.
Given your background, your experience, and what you know right now with your research, what percentage of the city do you think y'all will be encompassing with your?
Uh, well, I'll let him answer, because it's just one stretch to start.
Got it.
Right, so initially, we were looking down through, uh, forty-four through fifty-nine, uh, the main corridor here is, is where we wanted to build. And, and I think initially, you know, we, we did that and, and, and kind of thinking about, okay, where have we received requests in the past? You know, where did, where is the bandwidth feeded?
Fifty-nine.
We figured that, that main line construction could serve as a backbone location for us, so it does two things. It assists, obviously, with the grant going forward if we do go forward with it, but it also will help us kind of gauge, you know, how, what, where the community needs and services. Uh, so now, as far as going into depth, to seeing, okay, if we look at the overall community and see where could we feed it overall? I think we didn't do that initially, what we're doing now is just trying to see, you know, let, let's put a feeler out there, you know? Let's see how, how far it goes, let's see what we can do with it. Uh, it's kind of like the, the, you know, the comment he made, build it, and hopefully they will come, you know, is the scenario that we looked at. Uh, now, obviously, we did our due diligence, determined the cost, determined the structures passed, right? So we determined, based on, on, on previous, you know, locations where we built out, you know, competitively, we look anywhere between a fifty to sixty percent take rate. So we looked at that and said, okay, you know what, that's very aggressive, you know, in some cases, but we feel like we can be very competitive. So we think that if we can pu- pu- pick that up, the project over time, uh, will pay for itself.
I have one final question, how long would that project take?
So essentially, we're looking at six months, uh, for it to be completed. Uh, so, uh, obviously, you probably haven't seen permits come in yet, we haven't gone that far yet. The engineering was just completed this past week, we did some final changes to, we actually presented it, uh, last week as well, just, just quickly, uh, to the E C here, uh, just to say, this is what we're looking at, what we're trying to work on, uh, and then we're looking. Uh, and then, we're looking at, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we might go to permitting pretty soon, uh, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
And city.
That's all I have.
One more, just real quick. In regards to that million dollars, since that had, that project, that hasn't started, you haven't permitted, you haven't done anything on that, do y'all foresee shifting that into this project, or will that million dollars stay separate as y'all's own trunk line separately?
It has to stay separate.
Okay.
You have to per the grant, uh, permission.